Order, please. I don't really need a microphone. Thank you. This is a regular meeting of the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission. It is now 6:00 PM, I hope. Mr. Harmon, will you take the role, please?
Yes, or Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Adam. Commissioner Kapalongo.
Present.
Commissioner Prow.
Present.
Vice Chair Frost.
Present.
Chairman Pronzo.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. First item, the discussion, approval, disapproval of the minutes of a regular meeting conducted on April 7, 2022, and April 21, 2022. Gentlemen and Commissioner Adams.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we did receive a number of minor corrections from Vice Chair Frost. We have not had the opportunity to incorporate those into the draft minutes, although, as typical, he's very thorough.
As you do.
So you have the option of either adding more of your own or to approve with corrections, and we will take care of them and get them to you for signature.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the corrections that I made for the minutes that I have provided are principally grammatical and things like that to make them read correctly. There was nothing as far as the storyline or the information there that I had any correction on. So with that, I'll make a motion that the minutes be approved with the changes that have been submitted to correct grammatical and other errors like that.
I'll second.
Excuse me, are we taking these separately, April 7 versus the 21st?
I move for both. Would you like me to break that?
I wasn't here for the 21st, so if we could separate them.
Okay. I'll make that motion for April 7 then.
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by, was it Commissioner Kapalongo?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make that same motion for the minutes of April 21.
I'll also second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by Commissioner Kapalongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Old business. This is a presentation, a public hearing, and recommendation, I underline that word, recommendation of approval, approval with conditions or denial of a conditional use permit for an RV storage project by McCrichie Storage Ventures LLC, represented by Tim Lee Horn. Is Tim Lee Horn here?
They have a representative here, yes.
If you would, sir. Come up to the table so we can see you.
All right.
I know you wanted to stay incognito. I get it.
Yeah, I can't dress to go incognito.
Okay. Mr. Harmon, do we have a presentation?
We do, sir. A brief one. In our planner, Benitez's absence, she's on a previously scheduled vacation, I'm going to try to fill in. If you haven't noticed, the audience wouldn't necessarily notice, but I am losing my voice rapidly. This is my beginning-of-the-summer annual cold, so I'm trying to stay away from everybody, except I'm breathing into the microphone. Very quickly, just to recap, this is a request for property that is slightly west of the northwest corner of Hunt Highway and Merrill Ranch Parkway. It's currently zoned for highway commercial or B2. The court requests for an RV storage facility, which requires a conditional use permit per Title 150 of the town codes. The property itself does set back approximately 350, 400 feet from Hunt Highway. There are pads being proposed in front of it along Hunt Highway. The actual subdivision of these properties has not yet occurred and would have to occur before development took place on any of the parcels. Just basically, it's about just shy of 17 acres for this facility. Would be developed in one or two phases, and that has not been decided yet by the applicant. Storage spaces would be covered, 630 RV parking places provided in various depths, you know, for different types of RVs. Have one primary point of access, be at the south end of the proposal, right onto Merrill Ranch Parkway. And there would be up to two emergency access gates that would come off into the general area of those development pads that you saw. They would be like a shared parking access in that particular area. This is a little hard to see, it's more engineering than anything else, but just kind of a brief layout of the area. Hunt Highway, where's my cursor? There it is. Hunt Highway sits out in this location, and basically, we're showing retention areas for stormwater drainage and the basic layout of the facility. Basically, they're also looking at putting in a 400-square-foot temporary office at the front until property leased, in which case, they're proposing at this point for that to be removed, and that the site would not necessarily have a full-time office space there. There would be wash stations and RV dump stations. The dump stations would go into the mainline sewer in that vicinity. The building office hours proposed is 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and there would be a keypad access for the customers that have vehicles in there. Generally, the properties to the north is zoned for, is part of the Anthem Merrill Ranch single-family residential. It's currently vacant. To the east is the Circle K and future pads. To the south would be across Merrill Ranch Parkway, is zoned for B2, is not part of Merrill Ranch itself, and it's currently vacant. And to the west is also planned unit development, part of Merrill Ranch, and currently vacant also. The rest of this business commercial on-site, as you're aware, with the exception of the Circle K, is vacant property. Storage facility will not front on Hunt Highway, be set further back to allow for future commercial along the east side of the site. The Development Code and Anthem Merrill Ranch HOA codes do not allow on-street storage of RVs, and hence, the applicant sees this as a product that they would like to pursue. The use would be contained and screened. The planning commission tonight, should you so desire, can forward a recommendation of approval, approval with conditions, or a recommendation of denial of the conditional use permit to the town council. As of now, the public hearing and possible action, the town council is scheduled for June 6, and has been so advertised. I believe they went over the suggested stipulations or conditions of approval last time. They're fairly standard. However, the applicant has submitted additional conditions of approval that they are interested in pursuing, which includes making a taller enclosure around the property to meet, even though it's not in the Merrill Ranch PUD, to meet the design standards that are in the PUD, so that'd be more complementary to the existing products out there. Same with the gates. Canopies adjacent perimeter would have an opaque vertical screening. The applicant does have a presentation to follow, they have renderings that'll demonstrate this more. And that development, where it fronts on Merrill Ranch Parkway, would have increased landscaping beyond what is generally required by our code. They're actually looking at an offset double row of trees instead of, for example, one foot on, one for every 30 foot, which is typically what is required. They'll be doing approximately one every 15, and they'd be offset to build a much more definitive screen. That's basically it. I wanted to get you a summary. I know you've heard this all before. If you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to try to address it while my voice holds out. And other than that, I would turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, and to the applicant for their presentation.
At this time, I'll open it up to the commission for any questions, for Mr. Harmon.
Not at this point.
Okay. Then, love to hear your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to stand at the podium rather than sit here? Thank you.
Yeah, I would.
You can scroll through just by using the wheel.
Please state your name.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for your record, the name is Rod Jarvis with the law firm of Earl &amp; Curly. Address is 3101 North Central Avenue in Phoenix. I have representatives of McCrichie with me. I also have our planner, Mr. Brian Vaccaro, with Earl &amp; Curly also with me. Will staff advance the, be advancing the slides, or do I have a?
You can just use this for order.
Okay. What do I click to?
The wheel.
Okay, very good. Now I'm getting it. Thank you. All right. All right. This is the site. We're a little bit, as you've heard, west of Hunt Highway, north side of Merrill Ranch, wrapping the site currently occupied by Circle K on Hunt Highway. I gotta make sure I remember it. Now, this slide is important because it shows the actual site as compared to the site that's being left for commercial development. This has been, as we understand it, an important point for a number of people. A number of residents vindicated that they want to be sure that they can get commercial services out in this area. They don't want that opportunity to be foreclosed. And this slide is intended to demonstrate that we are leaving a very commodious parcel of real property precisely for that use. That property is 319 feet from east to west, and we're going to talk about that more, what that depth accommodates, as we proceed on. Our site is behind it, to the west of it, and it's our belief that this is an ideal site for this kind of use. It provides a much-needed service to the area, we're going to talk about that. It also provides a nice buffering to the area from the impacts of the commercial retail that everyone hopes will develop. In fact, it is our contention that the proposal that we're making to you, the development that we're proposing, is actually going to help facilitate that commercial development coming in. I keep turning that wheel the wrong way. Sorry. I'm going to get used to it. All right. This is what is being proposed. This is going to be a high-end RV storage facility. This is a photograph of an existing RV storage facility that McCrichie has in the state of Arizona. McCrichie is an experienced, well-funded RV storage developer and operator in this state and elsewhere. And McCrichie is in the business of finding areas that are underserved, we're going to talk about that. This area needs this particular use. This is what we think, based on comments we're receiving, a number of folks are concerned we're going to develop. This is not what we're going to develop. The photograph on the bottom there is an existing facility 6.7 miles to the north. All due respect to them, we're going to look a lot better than that. Compare the two facilities, the exterior and the interior. We are going to be offering a service to people who have spent a lot of money on very nice RVs, and they want a secure, nice place to store it. All right. Now you're getting an aerial view, you see the landscaping that was mentioned on Merrill Ranch Parkway. There will be a double row of trees, one row inside the wall, the other one outside the wall, of course, there are trees, so you'll see them over the wall, whether they're inside or outside the wall. Each row is 30 feet on center, but they're offset, so the trees are effectively 15 feet on center, which will provide a nice green screen to Merrill Ranch Parkway. Here's another view, aerial view, from another direction. You can see there are two sides where there are going to be canopies adjacent to the wall. We'll talk about how that screening will work on those walls. Here's a, more of a street-level view of the wall and the double row of trees. Compare that to the photograph I showed you of the existing facility six miles away. This will be a very aesthetic, very pleasing view, very nice addition to the streetscape. Here's another view of that. That is the temporary office, which again, will be removed once the facility is leased up. All right. There's been a lot of discussion about why here, and why we've gotten comments from people in both directions, actually. Some people who are in favor, many people who are opposed, and as you all know as planning commissioners, folks who are in favor don't typically show up at hearings, people who are opposed. I'm assuming most of those folks here will show up in numbers, but that doesn't mean that we don't have support out there, and that doesn't mean this is not an ideal location for it. Why is this an ideal location? Well, this is what the study shows. This is how many RVs, 6,600, are owned within 15 miles, and yet, there are only 700 RV The reason for these numbers is that RVs have become more and more popular. Apparently, the pandemic affected that. People had more independence to be able to be insular in their own RV, and so, you get more people buying more RVs as time goes on. As is well-known, in many, many HOAs now, you cannot park your RV on your lot unless you have a big enough lot and enough money to build your own RV storage garage. That is not a luxury that most people can afford. So if they got the boat that is sticking up above the fence, that's quote-unquote, it's a defined term in CCNRs, visible from neighboring property, and you can't have it. If you have an RV, obviously, that's going to stick up above the back wall, and that's going to be visible from the neighboring property, and you're not allowed to park those in those HOAs. That creates an additional need for this kind of use. And there's a lot of the older neighborhoods that may not have those HOA kind of restrictions, but they, there are many of those lots that don't have RV gates at all, and so it makes it difficult. Additionally, apparently, there was a church on Arizona Farms where RV parking was going on that was shut down, again, exacerbating the need. And another reason why this is an ideal location is its location relative to Hunt Highway. Now, as I pointed out, we are not taking the frontage, we're going to talk about that more, we're back off Hunt Highway, but not far. And being on the main accessway is important, having good access to this kind of use because if you have a big RV, you don't want to have to make a lot of circuitous turns through labyrinthous streets in order to get where you're trying to go. You want more of a straight shot with one of those kinds of vehicles. That's also true if you got one of those vehicles and you're pulling a trailer behind it. Or if you just got your truck or your SUV and you're pulling a boat behind it, you want a straighter shot if you can have it. Now, here's a very important point, and this was mentioned by staff, and that is that the property is zoned B2. We're going to talk more as we go on about all the uses that are permitted in B2, many of them much more impactful than this particular use. What we're here to talk about tonight is a recommendation regarding a conditional use permit, and that's an important distinction. An evaluation of a conditional use permit is not a question of whether the use is an acceptable use in the zone. It's more of a question of how well has this been designed to be compatible? It's a much different kind of inquiry. We're not here to talk about what's the highest and best use of the property. We're here to talk about, does it meet the standard of the CUP? B2 is called highway business commercial, and it is the most intense commercial zoning that the city has, and that is the zoning of this property. There you see the various zones kind of depicted in a graphic there. All right. Another reason why this is an ideal site is that a site of this depth can be very difficult to develop commercially. You have an inferior site on the back part of it, and if you can get that occupied, can help to encourage the development on the front. You don't need that kind of depth that this site has, if you combine the two sites together, for anything other than a very large anchor. You've already got the big anchor center across the street. There simply is not the density in the area to support another anchor center. What folks are telling us that they want are more restaurants, more service industry, and we're going to talk about that more, about the depth of the site and what it can accommodate. It can accommodate exactly those kinds of uses, but taking up the inferior site on the back is actually going to help to encourage development on the front, and we'll talk more about that. Part of the reason for what I just said is that this proposal is a catalyst for future You see here a site plan, that, you know, a conceptual site plan that's been prepared for the site, assuming that the proposed RV storage site goes in, and this is what the owner has said. "We plan to develop approximately six commercial pad buildings along Hunt Highway on our remaining property. We are in negotiation with a well-known coffee store, as well as another possible user. We have other potential users that have expressed interest. We are excited at the prospect of being able to bring additional commercial development to our site. The purchase of this back area by the developer of the storage facility is helping to facilitate the sale of the pad buildings along the Hunt Highway." Why would that be? You may ask, why in the world do you need to occupy the back part in order to be able to sell the front part? Well, part of the answer to that is that if you have that big expanse in the back, the pad developers, the pad users may be scared off because they don't know what's going to go there, what will happen back there? And while it's open and vacant, what kind of mischief can that create for me as a pad owner? And if you're not going to, as the city, allow investment of a very nice facility for a needed use by a responsible developer, what confidence does that give me to be investing my money here? Furthermore, of course, people that come to this site will see the pads that are there. You get some drive-by traffic. Now, a RV storage facility does not create a lot of traffic, and we're going to talk about that, but it does create some exposure for those uses there. So you eliminate the unknown, you create new development, you create an environment of welcoming new development, you create some exposure, and all of that helps to encourage the development of the front, which is the valuable commercial piece. Now, let's talk about that depth for a minute. I mentioned before how deep the site is and what that will accommodate. Look across Hunt Highway at the depth of the pad sites on the east side of Hunt Highway in front of the Safeway, and you'll see that that depth for those pads is 207. On our depiction there, our depth is 319 feet. So pads like that are easily accommodated on the depth that we're proposing. Now, let's go to this next slide. This is very telling. Here's an example of a commercial center that would fit in 319 feet. That commercial center has a CVS, it has restaurants, a shoe repair store, a nail salon, dry cleaners, and others. That commercial center in that photograph is 310 feet deep. We're talking about 319 feet deep. So this is not at all closing the door to the commercial development that folks in the area have said they would like to have. This is opening the door to it. It is facilitating it, and the owner himself has so indicated. So retail developers need housing density and disposable income, right? In order to invest your money to have a retail service, you need to know you have people who will be your customers. RV storage is a service that attracts residential purchasers with disposable income, thus attracting future retailers. There are a lot of people that don't have RVs or boats. I'm one of them. I have neither. I have friends who have them, but I don't have either one of those. I've used my dollars in other ways. There may come a day that I do that, but there are a growing population of people that do have RVs, and having a secure and attractive, high-end RV storage facility is going to be one of the elements that those potential home purchasers take into account in deciding where they're going to buy. Now, people will travel a goodly distance with their RV to store it because they don't visit it every day, but nevertheless, having it in the area is an amenity that many value. And when you attract those folks to the area to buy their homes, that also helps to encourage the retail development that everyone is saying that they want to have on Hunt Highway. I mentioned this before, investment attracts more investment. This development will cost millions to develop. If it is approved, it will send a signal that this community is welcoming responsible, high-end development. If it is denied, that will send perhaps an unintended message, but nevertheless, one that will be clearly received by many in the investment community, that this is not someplace where investment is going to be as welcome. If we are allowed to make this investment, that investment will move Florence ahead in significant ways. Okay, let's talk about, I mentioned this before, the uses that are permitted under the existing zoning. First of all, note that as a matter of right in the B2 zoning category, 40 feet of height is permitted of right for the structures that are built there. Our canopies, which are going to be the highest structures on this site, will be 15 feet on the top, 14 feet underneath. That's why you hear 14 feet, sometimes 15 feet sometimes. 15 feet as compared to 40 feet. So when folks are talking about, I don't want my views disturbed, they need to understand that as far as view preservation is concerned, this use is far more advantageous to them than many other uses that would be permitted, and the height that's permitted of right. Let's talk about some of those uses. Of course, if it's permitted, you don't have to have a public hearing. Here they are. Car dealerships, new and used, boat sales, trailer sales, RV sales, auto repair with outside vehicle storage, wholesaling, assembling, and manufacturing, laboratories, hospitals and clinics, hotels and motels, manufactured home sales. None of those requires a CUP. Our use does, and the photograph I showed you earlier, I think, illustrates why a CUP is required for the use that we are proposing. You saw that other facility that I showed in the photograph. Kind of junky-looking, to be perfectly honest, not intending to be disrespectful to this other user. It doesn't look that nice. So this CUP process that we're going through requires us as applicant to make sure that we're doing this responsibly, that we're preparing something that does look nice, that screens, that has landscaping. We're going to talk about that again later, we're going to show some slides, but we're, we've got a 10-foot wall, we've got a double row of trees. The reason we have that is input from the neighbors. That's this process that required that. These other uses, I mean, when you have a car dealership, you have a RV sales, you're going to keep it looking nice because you want your customers to come on, right? You want them to come on. You want them to come onto the site. You don't want it to look junky because you're trying to attract customers onto the site to come and buy. So when this category was prepared, it was recognized that you didn't need to do the CUP for those uses because they already had that built-in self-interest. The photograph I showed you indicates that there are some operators that don't seem to have that built-in self-interest of making sure that an RV storage facility looks as nice as an RV sales. That is the purpose of the CUP, and it's being fulfilled in the way that we've prepared this application. All right, next slide. So here's some examples of warehousing and light manufacturing that's permitted. Those warehouses like to go to that full 40 feet. They could go to 50 if they got a CUP for it. They like to go high because they need to have interior clearance. They need to have interior clearance so that when they use that forklift, they don't hit the ceiling. They need to be able to stack things nice and high, be able to use their facility well. Those things get built nice and high to accommodate the warehousing and light manufacturing use. They also create a fair amount of traffic. You see all those truck wells right there? That's indicative of how many trucks are coming and going. They're getting loaded up and getting shipped out. That is permitted of right. If you want to talk about views, if you want to talk about traffic impacts, that's what's permitted of right, and compare it to what we're proposing. 15 feet high, very low traffic count. We're going to talk about that later. Here's auto repair. In the summertime, in particular, those guys who are working and gals who are working on cars and trucks in auto repair like to keep those bays open. They like to keep them open because if you close them, they're too doggone hot to work in. And so you get the noise, you get the impact from those kinds of facilities. Those are allowed of right. Here's the RV sales. Those RVs aren't going to be screened from the street. Why? Because those are their wares. They're showing their wares. They want people to see them. They can't screen them and sell them at the same time. So those are permitted of right. Here's manufactured home sales, also permitted of right. Those aren't going to be screened. They're being displayed to attract customers to come and buy them. I'm not suggesting it's a bad use. It's permitted of right for a reason. I'm just showing this to compare our visual and our impact with theirs. And why is our visual and impact better? Because of the CUP process, which is making sure that we do it better. Okay. So again, compare what you've seen with what we're proposing, what you're going to see from the street. Now, there's been some concerns about security, about crime, raised with regard to our use. First of all, we've got the 10-foot wall, and the gate is 10 feet tall. Now, even in my younger days, and those are a number of years ago, I wasn't going to go scaling a 10-foot wall. And if I did, then how am I going to get down? And if I'm getting in there to steal something, how am I going to get it over the wall? That wall is a significant barrier, folks. You know, the only way in is with a keypad. Each customer has a unique code. There's very restricted hours. The gate is not, you know, can't be opened before 7:00 AM and after 7:00 PM. This site is really controlled, and there's cameras everywhere. From time to time, as needed, an onsite roamer, property manager while there's an office there, and an onsite roamer later on. But those 32 cameras never sleep, and they're always being monitored. That kind of monitoring is done by companies that hire people around the clock to watch monitored cameras, and they're recorded. Criminals don't like to go where they're being recorded. You end up on, you know, what is that called? Bad Boys, Bad Boys, I don't remember that show. But you know, you're on camera now. I mean, that's kind of hard to refute. They like to stay away from cameras. This is going to have 32 of them. And there are no hookups at the parking spaces. What that means is, you know, you don't have a sewer hookup, you don't have the electrical hookup, except for a very low amperage to be able to make sure your battery doesn't die. You can't run the RVs there, you can't live in the RVs there, so you can't be conducting some sort of nefarious business. We've heard alleged it will happen here. You can't do that because there's no service there. It's dark, and it's hot, or it's cold, there's no water. No. So, look, we're in the business of security. That's job number one for an RV storage company like this. And this is a high-end, well-funded company that has a reputation, it's built up, it wants to maintain. Job one is security. That 10-foot wall is going to protect very expensive RVs inside of it. It's one of the reasons the RV owners are going to come there. Now, I will tell you that our client has experienced with lots of RVs, RV storage facilities where their walls are only six feet, and they still don't have any problem. But in answer to the neighbors, we got a 10-foot wall. That's to satisfy the neighbors, as well as to add additional security and confidence for the customers. If anything gets broken into, it hurts job number one. It hurts performance of job number one. That's why we have the cameras. That's why we have the walls and the high gates. Simple fact is, we're in the business of providing security, and we provide it. All right. Project design aesthetics. We've talked about the double row of trees, we've talked about the 10-foot wall, we've seen these views. It's very, very attractive. I just, before we came here, we drove on Merrill Ranch Parkway and looked where this would be. It will, and by the way, Merrill Ranch Parkway, as you can tell by its name, and you've probably been there, is a nice wide parkway. It's a long way away from houses on the other side of Merrill Ranch Parkway to begin with, and then you add on to it the nice setback, the trees and the high wall. This is not going to be a visual impact. We've seen this photo. All right, now, this talks about the screening. You see here where the red arrow is pointing, we're going to have an additional screen on all of the canopies that are adjacent to the walls, so that the screen starts where the wall ends and goes up to the canopy roof, so you won't be able to see in and see the RVs that are parked in there. This gives a complete screen, a complete visual screen, for all of the canopies that are adjacent to walls. These arrows show where those visual screens will go. Those are the canopies that are adjacent to the walls. All right, traffic generation. These numbers are actually, I think, rather high. They've been prepared rather conservatively. The fact is that most people are not able, because of their schedules, to be going out in their RV every week or every month. It's not, for most people, something they can do that often. They don't, you know, they go out on a trip, they bring it back, they wash it in front of their house when they're unloading it, they bring it back here, they store it until their next trip. So the trips to and from are very, very low. This one is suggesting, at full use, 128 trips throughout the business day, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That, by the way, is a very low number for vehicle trips to a commercial property. AM peak hour, 10 trips, PM peak hour, 14. And by the way, each time you come and go, that's two trips. So a trip in, trip out. So you divide that by two to arrive at the total number of visitors, because each leg of a trip counts as a separate trip. Each leg of a visit counts as a separate trip. Now, this is, again, using conservative numbers. If you developed the entire property, and again, we don't believe you can, that the market will support it, but let's go into the world where you can. If our site that we're proposing to take, along with the rest of the commercial frontage, all were developed together to a reasonable capacity, it's estimated to be 185,000 square feet of commercial space. Daily trips to that, at that square footage, 6,846 trips a day, 155 at AM peak hour, 629 at PM peak hour. That's just put in there to give a very clear demonstration of the very low traffic impact that RV storage offers. All right, now, this gets us back to the discussion of zoning versus conditional use Take a look at this language here describing conditional use permits. In the third line, it's recognizing that some uses may not be completely compatible with adjoining or nearby permitted uses, if not specifically controlled. Right? This is language that's describing the process that we've actually gone through with the CUP. Specifically controlling it, specifically designing it to be compatible. It's not about the use, it's about the plan. All right. This division permits these uses after certain conditions have been met. The process outlined here will allow Planning, Zoning, Commission, and Council to review and approve or disapprove applications for these uses. It will also allow for the modification of an application, if desired, to make it, here's the key language, make it more harmonious and compatible. The issue isn't the use, the issue is how has it been designed, how has it been put together, has it been done in a way to make it harmonious and compatible? I would submit to you that the careful planning that's gone into this, the screening, the design, the stipulations have all been designed to make this harmonious and compatible. It's not about whether, you know, RV storage is an appropriate use in the BP zone. That's why it's listed as a use. And as I've shown you, comparatively speaking, to other uses that are permitted of right, our impacts are far less. The question is simply, have we done a responsible job in designing this to make it harmonious and compatible, in the way that it will be operated, in the way that it will look? And I would submit to you that we have. In this language, talks about the review that you all are doing. You look at the site at the proposed use and the surrounding land uses. You look at access to the site, which is off of Merrill Ranch Parkway, and the impact on adjoining and surrounding property if the application is approved. I've talked about the impact. I've talked about the view impacts. I've talked about the traffic impacts. I've talked about the security impacts. These have all been appropriately hedged in to make it harmonious and compatible, to eliminate those impacts, to reduce them to the point that they are less impactful by far than uses permitted of right. You heard discussion from staff already about the stipulations that we have offered, so I won't go through those specifically anymore. You see on this aerial view, you see Hunt Highway down in the left-hand lower corner, so you know that's where Hunt is. You see a couple of gates that are kind of teed from the facility in between those canopies that are adjacent to the wall. Those are NOX gates. Those are gates that, K-N-O-X, those are gates that only the fire department is able to open. That's what they're there for, is emergency access only. That shows that. This slide also shows where water retention is on the inside. Up here is the wash and dump station, and there's been concerns raised about the dump station. The dump station has been designed to eliminate any emission of odors, and it's going to go directly into the city sewer system. So it's well-designed for its purpose, it will serve its purpose, just like everyone else's sewer systems work according to their purpose. The fact that RVs have sewage doesn't make them any more objectionable than homes that have sewage, as long as you're doing it right and you're putting it into the sewer system, which is what we're doing. Okay. To sum up then, and I know I've gone on long, but there's been a lot of issues that have been raised over time, so I appreciate your patience with me. This is a service that's needed. It is an ideal location for the use. Under the CUP analysis, it's designed to mitigate the impacts on adjacent uses. It's quiet, has low traffic, low lighting, its visibility is well-screened, it's well-landscaped. The CUP is about impact, and we've mitigated those impacts. The property owner has a right to choose a use that works well for his property within the zoning. That's what the property owner has done. So we respectfully request a recommendation of approval of this requested CUP. Be happy to answer any questions, and I'd love the chance to rebut to any comments that are made as the hearing proceeds.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That was very thorough. I'll open up to the commission for any questions or comments.
Chair, I have four questions. Since you talked about the dump, will that be accessible to people who don't rent from you?
Will it be accessible to them?
The dump facility, right.
If they don't have a keypad number, they can't get in.
So it's only the people that are renting from you?
Only people who are renting from us. If they show up at the office and would like to look it over, then a manager will give them access and show them around.
But it's not open to the public?
But unsupervised access, no.
Okay. I'm confused on the 24-hour access, since the renters have the keypad access.
But that keypad will only allow them to work it between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM.
Okay, so no access at night?
Right, no 24-hour access.
Okay, thank you.
That's actually...
Sorry?
The letter from Kimberley Horn says, "An automatic access gate at the front entrance of the site will allow 24-hour access to customers via keypad."
My client's here, let me ask them for clarification.
If I may, the access hours are...
Please come to the microphone, or use that microphone.
Your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Ben Lockhorst, and I'm from 544-222 Riverfront Avenue, Southwest, Calgary, Alberta, Canada. Just to answer your question there, the access hours are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM per the feedback we receive from the town. And this follows the protocol we do at other sites as well, so there will be no 24-hour access.
If you can't understand him, he's saying 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, that's the only access, no 24-hour access.
So then...
Kimberley Horn may have said that when, back when it was different, but that is the stipulation.
Okay, and in your list of what you're allowing to be stored there, it says trailers. Would that include contractors' trailers?
I'm going to ask my client to comment on that.
We would only be, I don't know if you can hear me with this, or should I just...
Press the button down.
It's green.
Then speak into the microphone.
It would have boats and RVs and toy haulers. We don't like having contractors or other operators like that because there's potential damages to other vehicles, and it's a higher traffic use than we intend.
No contractor trailers, no contractor equipment. Can you guarantee that?
Yeah, per the least, you'd have to, an RV boat or toy hauler.
And last question, where is the nearest RV storage facility with these higher-end amenities that you're offering?
I think the closest ones would be outside of the 10-mile radius at least, from our research.
How many miles? Do you have an estimate?
They'd be towards Phoenix itself, so the southeast corner of Mesa or Queen Creek area.
Thank you.
All right.
If I may, I do have to say, I find the, I find the line, "High-end storage" to be oxymoronic and laughable. High-end and storage, not the same thing. And I do take, I take issue, sir, with your idea that we don't have to look at best use of the land. Yes, you're right, your client does have a right to put business on their property. We have a responsibility to look out for the interests of the town and the community and the people who live here. It's so, and I also, I have to say...
Is there a question in there?
I have to say, no, it's still a statement. Laying out an either-or, saying, "Well, we're going to do this business, which is much better than the other businesses that you could get here." Yeah, but we would still have a say on that, too. We would still have a say in that. So I think you need to dial that back a little bit. Just saying. Statement. Statement.
Is there a question?
No, it's a statement.
Okay, do you want me to reply?
I don't need to give you a question.
Do you want me to reply at all?
Fire away.
Okay, all right. With due respect, I disagree with your perspective. Let me explain why. First of all, if one of those uses comes in that's of right, you don't have, this would not come before you, it would not come before the council. It's a use of right under Arizona law. The city or the town would be reviewing it for site development, for site review, for design review, and so the town would be, staff would be looking at this, but would not come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission nor to the City Council for a review of that use. Now, with regard to the review of a CUP as opposed to zoning, I must take issue with you. I've quoted the language to you. This is not a question of the use, this is a question of, has it been designed to be compatible? Has it been designed to be harmonious?
At the best use of the land.
That is not correct. That is not correct.
Those were your words.
Highest and best use is a zoning inquiry. This is not a question of whether it's the best use of the land, this is not a question of the use at all. It's a question of whether it's been designed to be harmonious and compatible. If it's your conclusion it's not been so designed, that's within your purview, of course. You, you know, and it sounds like that's probably the position you may take. But under the language, this isn't me giving permission, this is the language of the law of the town of Florence. This is not an inquiry into the use, it's an inquiry into its design as to whether it's harmonious and compatible. That's what the language says.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please. Could you comment a little bit more on the, what is described here as a temporary modular pre-manufactured office building and what the term temporary means?
It's a pre-manufactured structure.
Okay.
And that's what it means by temporary. And once the site is leased up, they'll remove it. They won't have anybody in the office through the day, it'll continue to be monitored by cameras, and it will have occasional walkthroughs as needed. Obviously, if someone contacts the company and needs them to come out for some reason, someone will come to the site, but there will not be an office there any longer once the site is leased up.
Okay.
That's why it's a temporary, reflected as temporary.
So, I'm just going to repeat it back, just to make sure that I got that. This is only there during the development, essentially the development phase and the rental phase of this facility. As soon as some level is reached, then that facility, that temporary building is going away.
It would be removed.
And you will not have staff on-site anymore?
That is correct. At least not permanently on-site. They will come to the site from time to time, but will not be permanently stationed there.
Okay. The other thing I noticed is that, that you are going to cover all 630 RV parking spaces, but then you talk about here that in Phase 1, there will be covered, and then the covering of Phase 2 might extend as rentals. And I'm not quoting exactly, because I'm not...
No, you're right, there is an inconsistency there. It is the intent that all of the spaces will be covered, but it is also the intent that there will be two phases of that. The first phase goes in, that gets leased up, then when the second phase is ready to be leased up, those get covered. But it's not all at once, in likelihood.
So, and then, just so that I understand, when you are ready to go into Phase 2, you'll build a covering so we won't have exposed recreational vehicles in the Phase 2 waiting for the coverings, the coverings will come there before the rentals take place?
Let me confirm with my client while my client's here. Is that the intent?
We would have the perimeter done first to ensure that everything is screened, and then the interior, which wouldn't be visible at any point due to the height of the wall and the screening itself, would then be covered in the second phase.
So it will all eventually be covered when you've leased up the first phase?
Correct.
And then you cover the second phase?
Okay.
That's correct.
I think I answered my question.
Just to clarify, I'm hard of hearing. Get goes in here, kill me.
Yeah.
Your first phase, when your phase is finished, it will be covered before you start the second phase?
That's correct, that's what we're telling you.
All right. My name is Blon, that, well, we never started number two, so I won't cover number one. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one question.
Please.
I have just one question concerning the dumping stations.
Yes, sir.
Personally, I own an RV, so I know how those things work. I'm just wondering, how would that be managed? You know, there are people that sometimes have little mistakes when they're dumping. Would there be somebody on-site to, you know, take care of that?
Let me ask my client, come on up, that microphone echoes too much. Come here and talk here. How do they manage it when, you know, the office is no longer open, and somebody's dumping and they...
Yeah, they have a mistake.
They blow it.
Little spill.
All right?
At that point, whoever did the spill themselves, there's also a wash station nearby, we would have the, they'd call a line, and the manager, whoever was the roamer for this facility would come to the site and deal with it that way. So that there wouldn't be any sewage just laying around at any point. Because one of the things we pride ourselves on with these facilities is that they're high-quality, they're clean, they're not smelly, and that's what incents customers with these extremely valuable vehicles to come to us and store with us.
That's assuming they call.
So who calls? One of the users calls, or do you see it on the camera and send somebody?
Yeah, so conversely, if there's no call, we see it on the camera, and then we also have periodic visits to the site once a day, at least by whoever's the roamer for the site.
So it could be sitting there for hours before someone sees it.
The answer to the question is, someone can call if there's a mistake. If they don't call, we see it on the camera. If we don't see it on the camera, roamer comes at least once a day and sees it.
Okay.
All right, we're getting well into the operating procedures, and that's not what we're here for tonight. Those things will come later if it's approved by council or even recommended by this commission. We're not that far yet. Are there any other questions or comments? I want to thank you, sir, for a very, very thorough presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harmon, I'm going to ask you to speak. Help me out with my ignorance. I understand how B2 is written. I well understand how B2 is written. This is not my first day on the job, but there are many people here who do not. And so, we have this concept we think of as highest and best use of land. It's rather subjective, kind of hard to get your arms around. I know for me, when I hear highest and best use of land, I think of a two-story professional building or a new car lot, any number of things, you can use your imagination. In land, highest and best use also has location, location, location. How are we using the land and where is it located? What is it appropriate for the development, the town, or the stage of development that the town is now at? So, you want to take a whack? I mean, I could take a whack at it, but then it would show where I am in this thing. So I'm going to ask you to do it.
So, I don't feel like I've been put on the spot at all. And it is, you're right, it's 100% subjective, it's highest and best.
And for those who don't know Mr. Harmon, he's a professional planner. He's a day older than dirt, so he's been doing this a real long time.
Thanks.
And I have the utmost respect. I've had many good councils from this gentleman, and I'm asking for it now.
Okay.
Hey Larry, if you would, would you, that microphone seems to be working a lot better. People can hear it, I think, better.
You're taxing my little pea brain that's on cold medicine right now, so just be aware of that. And just to add on to what the chairman just said, yeah, I've been, I'm in my 53rd year of doing this for a living. Been in Arizona since 1973, so I've seen pretty much every change that you've all, you know, come into town for. Highest and best is very subjective, and it varies from community to community. I hear, not only here in Florence, but in other jurisdictions where I've worked over the years, well, you know, why don't you go out and get us A? And then there's this litany of uses that may, number one is always Trader Joe's. We want a Trader Joe's. That's not our choice, as much as we think it would be, or we would want it to be. Development of commercial property looks at basically four criteria. One is rooftops and population density. And each business has their own radius of those rooftops and population that they look for in their criteria of picking sites. The second one is educational level of the people that are living there. That one might be a little tainted a little bit these days, just because of, you know, discrimination against poorer class or uneducated or whatever, but indeed, that's what retailers look for. And the third is disposable income. You know, what is the household income average within that particular radius they are looking at? And then the fourth criteria, and it's the all-encompassing one, like you just said, it's location, location, location. Certain businesses want street frontage, certain businesses don't need street frontage. Some of them want access to major arterials, some of them can do it on major collectors or minor arterials. It's, you know, it depends on the criteria that those businesses have. For example, you know, I've been in the economic development business, is one of the hats I've worn since the mid-'80s, and, you know, I've had the deal with commercial development and attracting commercial developers, which is very difficult to do, because they don't want to talk to you if you can't prove the criteria, you can't demonstrate the criteria that they're looking for. So, like you said, it's subjective. Location is going to be huge on where businesses are going to want to go. If anybody that has gone out, you know, let's go to Costco, they are on the intersections usually of major arterials because they want two different frontages of access. Restaurants, things of that nature, they want frontage, but it can be a singular frontage. Because they end up, like was shown in the hype, in the concept plan, and it's strictly that, it's concept, they have not pursued the plating or anything of that property yet. There, they, you depend on shared access, because, you know, your business, Walgreens, you know, somebody might go in to pick up their prescription and then drive through the parking lot to get to a restaurant or to a Dutch Brothers or somebody like that for something else before they leave the property. So shared access is very common in that scenario, but those are smaller development paths. So, like I said, it's subjective, it's a litany of criteria goes into site selection for different types of product.
Thank you, sir.
And that's about as obscure as I can make that answer.
No, I appreciate the, I appreciate the effort, and it helps in the decision-making process. Okay.
Please?
Mr. Chairman, Larry, could I bug you one more time?
Should have brought my cane.
And this is from your experience, if you could elaborate, because what I've seen in times past is that the, kind of the cherry areas get picked first. First one is that corner-corner, which Circle K has done. And then the next one are going to be the frontages as depicted going down Hunt Highway. In your experience where this has happened, and I'm sure this is not the first experience where we've got a deep commercial area and those cherry lots and businesses get picked along the arterial, what have you seen happen behind them?
It's been my experience that if those were to develop first, let's say, with whatever mix of commercial uses, it makes it that much more difficult to develop that rear portion in, you know, in the back for whatever reason. I can't explain what the site selectors or, you know, goes through their thought process of why they don't want it. But they end up being issues that the local community ends up having to deal with in code enforcement. You know, weeds does control, things of that nature. And we are a PM-10 attainment community, and I won't go into the whole detail of that, but we are regulated as to our air quality for those types of properties.
So I guess, I don't want to put words at your mouth, but I just want to make sure I understand, that when the choice lots get picked and they're on the good frontage, it's, in your experience, that it's much more difficult to attract the commercial development behind them because they lack exposure or they lack something that they need?
Yeah, that's been my experience in other communities, yes. And I just wanted to kind of give you a perspective on what that kind of means, too. You know, I mentioned earlier that this is set back about 350 feet, the actual dimension from the property line is 319, but I'm talking, I was talking about curb length. For a grocery store-type site, which takes a larger parking, a larger footprint, there your development depth is closer to 700 feet, but we already have the grocery store on the opposite side of the street, opposite side of Hunt Highway, and that reduces the likelihood of having another one on that same corner. And that you can see, you know, most anywhere in the valley, that's pretty common practice. Doesn't mean one isn't going to try to be close by within a mile or two, but they typically are not going to be on the same intersection.
Any other grilling questions for our resident expert? Okay, we'll leave you alone, Mr. Harmon. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public for public comment. Comments will be exclusive to this subject. Please feel free...
While someone is coming to the podium, Mr. Chairman, also, I had provided you in your supplement to your packet, that your location, various emails that we've received on this case and case 6A also, and those were distributed to you prior to the meeting, and they're up there at your dais.
Okay. Some rules of the road, a lot of people in this room tonight, and I know you all want to speak, but there's only a certain amount of subjects we can cover that are applicable to an RV parking garage. So as we go through, I would appreciate it if we're not redundant. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Royal Deland. I live at 2326 North Kaminsky Drive in Annapolis.
Oh, also, one more thing, I know I'm interrupting, but speak plainly, relax...
Okay, do my best.
And do it at a pace that we can all understand.
Sure.
All right.
I sent you all, my wife and I sent you an email this morning, I hope you got it, it was rather lengthy, but let's cut to the problem. Merrill Ranch Parkway is a parkway. That brings with it unique zoning and planning conditions. Parkways are normally defined with landscape meridians and wide setbacks. Now, currently, no commercial business from Felix to Camden faces out on Merrill Ranch Parkway. So what is a good example of planning and zoning on a parkway? Let's look at the Safeway Shopping Center. 100-foot setback to the Subway Banner Clinic. Those businesses face inward. There is no signage visible from Merrill Park Ranchway, and the 100-foot is heavily landscaped, so that the back of those buildings are literally hidden. So let's cross runway now to the newest section of Merrill Ranch Parkway. And what they would like to do is put the first commercial business on Merrill Ranch Parkway that faces out on the parkway. And they want, what, 25, 30-foot setback? That's here to right there. They can't landscape it. The picture was cute, but 30 feet is 30 feet. And here's the real problem. No one wants to talk about the elephant in the room. How can you safely enter and exit an RV into this facility from Merrill Ranch Parkway? Imagine, they want... Imagine, they want to do up to 45 feet. 45-footer would have to be in the left-hand lane to turn right into their business. So what do you want to do? Take out more of the sidewalk area to make a turn lane? And, so right now, you want to exit the facility if it got built, where, what would you do? You'd have to turn right on Merrill Ranch Parkway, go about 100 yards, and negotiate a U-turn at Camden, and go back to Hunt. Imagine that, 40-foot, 45-foot RV trying to make a U-turn there. Second option, you turn left on Camden, and you cut through my neighborhood, for about 12 blocks to Ripken, and then you turn left, and you go out to Hunt Highway, and get on Hunt Highway, another bad option. Anybody here want RVs going through their neighborhood? I don't. So what's the third option? It doesn't exist, and nobody's talking about it. Take out more of the meridian, and make a turn lane. You already took out over 200 feet, how do I know that? I measured it two days ago, to create a turn lane for the Circle K. Took out trees and native desert plants to put in cement and asphalt. To make an exit for their facility, you'd have to take out probably the whole rest of that meridian. That's our parkway to our subdivision, to our community. We want it to look just as nice as the other side. Think about it, the parkway is the first impression to Anthem. You turn in there, whether you're coming to buy a home, visiting, the golf course, whatever, the parkway is the first impression. Let's maintain it, let's keep it. Kudos, I hope Mr. Harmon was involved in the planning of the Safeway Shopping Center, because it's exactly what, how a parkway commercial site should look, exactly. It's invisible, and this would not be invisible.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Karen Mitchkey, 8048 West Valor Way in Florence. I'm not accustomed to speaking publicly, so please bear with me. My problem is with the high-end RV storage, okay? You put lipstick on a pig, it's still going to be a pig. I mean, down, down the way, I mean, gas prices right now are at an all-time high. I don't, I see a lot of people selling their RVs instead of buying more. Right now, it's a bad time with the gas prices. Also, you are saying you're going to keep this high-end, and it's going to be RVs, and it's going to be toy haulers and such, but when times get tough, what guarantee do we have that it won't be just work vehicles and such? And I'm sorry, a 10-foot wall? 13 and 1/2 feet is how the average height of an RV is. Now, you're going to say, all these coverings, what are these coverings going to be made of? That's another question, that are, that are going to be attached to this to cover them. I don't, I just don't see it. I'm sorry, this is not the place for it. The gentleman behind, in front of me, spoke it eloquently, this is not needed in our area, please, no RV storage. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Alan Olson, I live at 7737 West Noble Prairie Road in Florence. I'm here, I have something that I want to read to you, and it's not from me, it is from my wife, who is, couldn't be here tonight, but she has some expertise of chairing a planning commission, serving six years on a city council, and mayor for 10 years in the community that we lived in, in Cathedral City, California.
I'm familiar with your wife.
I receive file, she received these files from Earl Curly on this project. This project looks like it doesn't quite know yet what, or will be when it's developed. I have a number of questions, and I hope someone will address these. What is 5,000 square feet marked daycare doing there? It is clearly in the drawing, and clearly on the square footage legend. One drawing shows car wash off Merrill Ranch, another one shows it in the middle of the site. Where will this car wash actually be? What kind of store will they have on site? Is it clearly in the drawing, and it's clearly on the square footage lesson? And what is minor A? What are six pads for? One is 3,537 square feet, what are the proposed uses of these pads? And at that point, the project. No permanent office, no permanent oversight, gate hours from 7:00 to 7:00 p.m., and he said, how is the gate locked from 7:00 to 7:00 p.m.? 5,900 RVs with no place to park in a community of some 20,000 people. Who did that study to come up with that number? Even in a 20-mile radius, there can't be more than 50,000 people. Who's the landlord? Couldn't the parcels be recognized for a strip center, for medical offices, vet offices, professional offices, saloon, or salon, or some type, and not just fast food? What will be the revenue stream from this project to the town? Has the town done a cost-benefit analysis on this project, and looked at potential long-term loss of jobs to the community, as well as potential tax dollars? And will the developer provide private security? And how many spaces will this project have, from 630 to 700? Those are the questions that she came up and asked, and then she had a statement, which is brief. There are four types of community needs, perceived needs, expressed needs, and absolute needs, and relative needs. Perceived needs are based on what individuals feel their needs are, what is it for me? Expressed needs, wouldn't we like all the good steakhouse? Absolute needs is now another story, as we live in a very underserved community, and once land is entitled, it's gone forever. We are giving land up a commonly 630 to 700 RV owners, at the cost of over 16,000-plus Florence residents. 6,000 of us right across the street from this project. What is the relative need of this project, and the value to the community? When are we in need of so many services to serve the everyday needs of the entire community? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Christina Corey Ali Buckner, I live at 7812 West Willow Way in Florence. My husband's over there, so I'm going to read parts of a communication he had submitted today, that I think is very salient to the people in this room. The request for a conditional use permit should be rejected for the following reasons. The proposed RV storage would not serve the broader needs of the adjacent community of Merrill Ranch. It would only serve a small percentage of the community. This is a perceived need, not a real need. There is a very limited amount of land adjacent to Merrill Ranch that is zoned as commu, as community commercial, and approving the RV storage proposal would greatly limit any development of retail and other services to the area. There are many other locations in Florence that would be much better located for an RV storage, an example being the land adjacent to the existing storage facility on Arizona Farms Road. Approving the RV storage proposal would not be consistent with the intent of the Florence General Plan. The General Plan states, typical uses include retail and commercial services, professional offices, and health facilities that are intended to serve at a community and regional scale. The RV storage does not meet that test. It is incompatible with the plan. Let's see. The intent, while I understand, is that there is still a vacancy of an Economic Development Director position, or as I, as we are to understand, focus should be on attracting the right kinds of businesses to the area, to take a young Florence, which is three areas of Florence, and try to bridge them together with opportunities that will create employment opportunities, density housing, and just building the town in general. And I just, at the end of the day, the RV storage facility would not meet that, that objective. My husband and I are less than 12 months old, having relocated from California to here, to Florence, Arizona. Had we known about the RV storage plan, we would never have purchased our home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My name's Dawn Duncan, I live at 5780 West Victory Way. I hate speaking publicly, but nobody asks the obvious question, which is, where are these people going to fill up their RVs with gas? There is a Safeway across the street, and they're putting in a Circle K. I know when I go on vacation, the first thing I do before I leave is put gas in my car, and when I come back from riding my motorcycle, the first thing I do is put gas in it. If you've ever been up on Highway and gone on that Safeway, you know that it's not equipped for RVs. You will not get an RV into that Safeway gas station, but I guarantee, people are going to try it, and so you're going to run the risk of accidents. If they can't get it there, they're going to jam up that Circle K across the street, trying to fill their tanks up there. So, the point of having the Circle K gas station is basically to essentially do nothing but to fill up RVs, because that's what's going to happen. If you've ever sat behind an RV filling up, it takes more than a minute. So, you know, it's going to affect more than just the people in the surrounding neighborhoods, people who travel through, and see that there's pumps filled up with RVs, they're not going to stop and get snacks, they're not going to stop and hit the Safeway, they're just going to keep going till the next gas station, which is in downtown Florence or somewhere else. So, I guess that's my question, is where's the gas going to be pumped out of? It's not Safeway.
Then I'll close from the public. I believe you asked to have a rebuttal. And I'm sorry, but I didn't write your name down, and I can't remember it.
My name is Rod Jarvis.
Jarvis, Mr. Jarvis, thank you for your indulgence.
And, thank you, and my compliments to the speakers, you all spoke very well, you've thought out your comments and concerns very well, I compliment you. I've been to a lot of hearings where people have not been so articulate, so well-thought-out, so, again, sincerely, I, I compliment you for that. I'd like to answer a couple of the issues, if I may. The first issue that I'd like to talk about is the question of access, ingress and egress to the parkway. You have a staff that will make sure that that issue is handled appropriately. They're probably going to require us to carve into our property and put in a right-turn decel lane. Whatever they ask us to do, we'll do. They will probably ask us to put in a median brake for vehicles to be able to turn left onto Merrill Park Parkway. That's all if this is approved, obviously. If it's not, then that's not going to be initially to deal with. But, if that property is left undeveloped by us, continues to be zoned as we've talked about, it's already zoned, you will have those ingress and egress questions, and maybe not with RVs, but you'll still have ingress and egress issues, you'll still need a median brake there for people to be able to turn out left at some point along Merrill Park Parkway. The, the issue was raised about facing the property. This kind of use, as you've seen from the site plan, and I won't pull it up again, but it's a very narrow frontage onto the road, this kind of use doesn't need to occupy a lot of frontage, it's not going to dominate at all, it is well landscaped. If there's a desire for more landscaping, just tell us, we're going to have this be a very beautiful, very attractive front door. The question was raised about various uses, those are shown on a conceptual plan for the rest of the commercial, it's not the subject of tonight's discussion. We're very clear what we're proposing to do with the CUP, and, and that's set forth on our site plan. The question was raised about consistency with the General Plan. This is not a General Plan question, this is a hard-zoned property. General Plan guides zoning decisions going forward, this zoning decision was already made. The question was raised about where people will get gas, my guess is any one of a number of places. If it's not convenient for them to get it at the Safeway, if it's not convenient for them to get it at the Circle K, there will be a number of other gas stations, those folks are going to know their paths in and out. When you get in your RV, you don't, aren't going in your RV just down the street to your, your friend's house and back, you're, you're getting in the RV to go on a long trip. You're going to know along the route where you can gas up. I, I think there's going to be lots of opportunities for, for gassing up. If there are other questions, I'm happy to answer them, but those were the highlights I, I heard, and I'm trying to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question for staff. I've been caught rather flat-footed with this business-facing Merrill Parkway. I've been running the PUD through my head, I don't remember reading anything that prohibits that, do you?
You're, you're talking about prohibition of, of commercial frontage on Merrill Ranch Parkway, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, the, the first gentleman to speak spoke about a business-facing Merrill Ranch Parkway.
Well, the, again, this property is not in the PUD. Now, the PUD has its own design criteria, and whenever the parkway on, you know, going east off of Hunt Highway, all the way to Felix, was designed, it was designed deliberately to not have commercial enterprises in there, and the primary frontage was on Hunt Highway, but there were no specifications that I'm aware of regarding Merrill Ranch Parkway to the west of Hunt Highway. So, is it consistent with what is on the east side? Maybe, maybe not, I mean, you know, the Safeway Center does have an access out to the two Merrill Ranch Parkway, and that, you know...
I understand we are outside of Polte's.
Yeah, and, and keep in mind that this, you know, is also going to be an engineering question, as far as where there can be driveways, where there can be median cuts, things of that nature, it's just not necessarily a free-for-all.
Excuse me.
They're going to have to meet certain engineering criteria, there's certain distances between cuts, things of that nature, so it would be controlled, the town's engineer would have to evaluate, it would probably be part of a TIA, which is Traffic Impact Analysis, as to what type of tone, turn movements would be appropriate, things of that nature. So it's not just a black-and-white issue, it has to go through a design process.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, can I hear that right?
Whoa, whoa, whoa! Whoa! You don't just speak out, if you have something to say, come up to the microphone. Short clarification, I've already closed to the public.
Just, it sounded like West Merrill Parkway isn't Merrill Parkway. If you're going to build the RV, let the RV thing be put there, then let's change the name to Winnebago Road.
I really fail to see anything funny about that. All right, childish shenanigans aside, can we have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion, let me get back to the correct verbiage here, so I can find it.
Do you need to...
No, I've, I've turned back. I make a motion for positive recommendation of conditional use permit for RV storage project to the, to our town council.
So we have a motion by Vice Chair Frost as a positive motion, as a recommendation?
As a recommendation.
With or without conditions?
Oh, I'm sorry, with, with the conditions as stated this evening by staff, and agreed to, and stated by the applicant.
Do we have a second? No brave souls. I second that emotion. Motion, Freudian slip. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
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 Motion fails. Motion failed. Okay, so we've ran the gamut, but we still need a motion that passes. We haven't passed a motion. You want to make a recommendation against it, then make a recommendation against it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move to deny.
We do things professionally here. When these people leave, we want them to go out, outside of our community, and still be able to say that Florence is open for business. We are not hostile. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Capolongo, second by Commissioner Prue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's you and me.
Nay.
Motion carried.
Just as a reminder, just as a reminder, then this is scheduled for the June, the first meeting in June on the town council agenda.
June 6th, correct?
June 6th.
June 6th. Just as a point of interest, and I understand why you're here, how many have petitioned their elected official on this subject? Very few. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
If it has to do with this.
Yes. I would just like to thank Mr. Jarvis and the petitioner. This was a very difficult decision. I believe that they are a business that has shown an extreme willingness to work with you all, to accommodate. They listen to you. I believe this process has worked quite well, that you all showed up at the, I guess there was a neighborhood meeting and the last P&amp;Z meeting, I was not here. You have all written eloquently. I wanted to thank everybody, because I feel all parties stated their cases very professionally. And I'm a resident of Florence, these are my neighbors, but I do feel that you made your business case. And as the chair said, we are desperate for businesses like you to come to Florence. So I hope this doesn't color you for all of Florence, because it is a needed facility. It may not be needed to the people in this room, but I have been petitioned by many people in Florence who don't have a facility like this and go to AJ. So that's why I asked the nearest facility. But I'm with you. You are the people that will be most impacted. You live there, you're property owners, you have made a choice to live here, and I support that. But I also thank everyone, the business for...
Okay. Let's move along.
Mr. Chairman?
New business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a correction. As a town councilman, I received 40 to 50 letters about this subject.
Thank you, sir. Let's move along. All right. New business. This is the presentation, public hearing, recommendation approval with conditions for a major planned unit development amendment, the PUD amendment. I understand that the applicant has asked for a continuance.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we do have a presentation ready, if you'd like to see it. However, we did receive a communication from the Whitney Morris, who is representing the application for the mini-storage on the southwest corner of Merrill Ranch Parkway and Felix Road. Please accept this email as formal request for continuance for the above-referenced case concurrently scheduled to come before the commission on May 19th, 2022. We recently, we recently conducted a community meeting to discuss the project. At that meeting, it became apparent there is considerable public interest and concern regarding the request, as well as some misinformation. Our client Wentworth Property Company continuously strives to be a good neighbor with the projects they develop. In that effort, we would like to take some additional time to reevaluate the proposal and further engage with the community. A continuance to a date uncertain would be our preference, but if a date is perverted, we would request June 16th. Date uncertain means that they would be responsible for all costs related to re-advertising and reposting of the property itself.
Thank you, sir. I don't know that it serves any purpose to have a presentation at this time. I would prefer to do it when the applicant is ready. You with that? So then I'll make a motion to grant the continuance.
I'll second your motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried.
Are, to a date uncertain, Mr. Chairman?
No. It costs a lot of money to prepare these things.
I'm just tired of these people wasting our time.
So to, to a date uncertain, he's, he's asking for clarification on your motion, to date uncertain?
I'm sorry? Who's asking for clarification?
Yeah, asking clarification, to date uncertain?
I understood that the...
That's their preferred request.
The letter was wide open.
Yeah, they preferred a date uncertain.
But they did, they did say June 16th, if not.
If not, right. So I'm just, was wondering which way your motion was meant to...
To date uncertain would be our preference, but if a date is preferred, we would request June 16th. June 16th. So you would like us to do the motion over?
Just looking for clarification from the motion maker.
I didn't stipulate June 16th. I left it open because of that last sentence, but okay.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move that this be continued to June 16th. All those in, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
June 16th.
Commissioner, Chair Commissioner, George Pasquale, the applicant. I would prefer the uncertain, just because it became very obvious from our initial outreach that if we were to come back to you, some significant changes would be required and some outreach would be required. And I don't know if we could get that done in three weeks, three months, I'm not quite sure. So to save everyone's time, that's why I prefer the date uncertain. If it has to be a date, I'll accept that as well, but that was our, that was why we preferred the date uncertain.
Now I'm reaching the end. Moving on. Presentation information only, future agenda items.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. So did we end up with date uncertain?
No, date's not uncertain. We moved June 16th. Etched and granted, done.
Future agenda items.
May we please have future agenda items?
I would have to defer to the director, Keith Eaton, if he's aware of any. I am not.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, whoop. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. We're not aware of any. At the last meeting, there was a suggestion of bringing something before the commission. We're presently working internal on that, to prepare that, to bring back to the commission.
That's it?
That's all.
What about June 16th?
I'm not 100% sure. We'll have it on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Oh, God, I hate to do this. Call to the public. Do we have any speakers? Call to the public.
I'm Bonnie Rogers. I live at 5672 West Autumn Vista Way, here in Florence, the Arcadia neighborhood, where the continuance was granted for the Whitney Morris.
Ma'am, if you're going to speak on this subject, I need to tell you, you can say what you want, but because, I don't know, that's an agenda thing. It is on the agenda.
I would have to defer maybe to our attorney, but since it's not a public hearing at this point, any comments made? Oh, okay. Your attorney wants to speak?
Mr. Chair, it's called the public, so it's open to any item that could be in front of the commission. So even if it relates to another project during call to the public, the individual can speak.
So I didn't hear, but the question is, can we respond to a question because it is on the agenda?
You can't respond to questions during call to the public, but the citizen can speak.
Okay. I'm sorry, ma'am, we just needed to get the rules straight.
That's okay. I just wanted to bring to your attention that I and five of my neighbors, once we received notification for this particular plan to put a self-storage facility right over the gate, some of my neighbors' backs fences, behind the Church of the Mosaic, that we went to our neighbors and we asked them about how they feel about this, and we have an, we had initiated, because majority of the people we spoke with did not want this to happen, we went, we went and initiated a petition that we have the 59 percent, 59 homeowners that are required, because there was 118 notifications that went out, based on the 300-feet setback from this particular property, that we have the required, we've overmet the threshold for that 20%, according to the 150.15 code for opposing this. And then also, we have another additional 180 signatures on our petition. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I know that they put this, it's supposed to come today to your, to the, to the board, but they have pushed it back to the 16th of June. I just want them to take that into consideration when they come forward. And I will come back to the meeting on June 16th, and I'll come to every other meeting to oppose that development and the rezone, the rezoning from neighborhood, our neighborhood, from residential to highway commercial for a mini-storage to be put in, in our beautiful, quiet, family neighborhood that doesn't belong there. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your volunteering us and keeping our community nice and happy and healthy for all of our residents.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other? Okay, then I'll close to the public. I'll open up to the commission, current events only.
So I have two things, and maybe as a request to the planning department. I know that when we have these hearings, you send out letters to the property owners within some many feet of the issue, wherever that is.
Is this a, is this a current event?
Well, it's about, it relates to today's on the RV storage. What I'm asking is because I got calls about that as property owners received the letters, but I didn't know anything about. And so what I'm asking is if the commission could be copied on these letters when they go out, because it happens way before we meet. So when people call me, I have no idea what they're talking about.
Okay.
My second point was in the meeting minutes, I know Vice Chair Frost has asked about this, and it has to do with the landscaping being part of the final plat. And I would raise that also, because as we heard today, and a lot of our work is about frontage. And I understand that today, that's the rule, it goes in the final plat, which only goes to council, but I'm asking if there is in some way that we can be of service in having a preview, so that we can also add, not just cosmetics, I think a lot of the issues have been safety-related. So, thank you.
Any other current events?
Nothing here.
Nothing new, exciting? Must be summer. Okay. I'll close to the commission. Gentlemen, please, give me a motion.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Capolongo, second by Vice Chair Frost. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.